Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I wanted to ask Mr. Goodwilly. You don't need to come to the podium, but in the future, I was looking at these over the weekend and there aren't any addresses for property. And so in their exemptions and so forth, we don't know where they are. So it'd be helpful if you could put up, for me anyway, where they're located. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, there's a motion to approve resolutions and adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
Please vote. We'll move to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusham, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, Approval of Minutes of Board of Commissioners Meeting Held Tuesday, June 21st, 2011. Item B, Approval of Claims Submitted for Payment Process Through Tuesday, July 12th, 2011. And the complete listing is on office in the county clerk's office. It's on file in the county clerk's office. Item C, there's exceptions to, for five of them, for DOT COM. Is there a motion to approve? Any questions or comments? Please vote. Consent Agenda, Items A through M. About two or three?
Thirteen.
Thirteen items. Commission, is there a second? Mike, Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I spoke to the county attorney who's here today and asked her to take a second look at Item C, which is an agreement. It's perpetual. It does have a date by which it can be renewed and canceled and so forth, but I think it needs an ending date. So I asked her if she would, if we could have a week to tighten that up a little bit. So to take that one off.
Do you want to see poll?
Please, just to get some language corrections, possibly.
Seeing no other issues with pulling Item C. We do have the rest of the consent agenda. Please vote. The only question I have on Item C then is, is this going to interrupt the services since it's at the end of, we don't meet again until July 12th?
If it does, then I'll retract that and we'll go ahead and I'd ask that it be approved and then we can bring it back again, maybe with some changes.
With the specific vendor, sometimes they'll continue to do the services. This is set to expire, or the contract is set to take place July 1st. Without knowing some more of the details with this particular contract, I couldn't tell you.
Why don't we do this? I wasn't aware of that, I wasn't thinking of that. I didn't realize it was on deadline. So let's, I'll make a motion to approve C. And then we can, if there's some changes, I'll just suggest them to you. You can see if you want to do an amendment or anything, or if there's even, if it's even needed.
I'll second.
Okay?
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Approval of Item C, please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none. I'm going to make a little change here under Presentations. I know we have our treasurer that is going to be presenting, but under the Child and Youth Services, we also have Item Two that I would ask Ms. Nicole Goldie from the County Attorney's Office to come forward and present the information now.
I'm sorry, I have a citizen's comment. I've never been to this before and so I didn't realize it's my turn to speak.
Okay, that's fine.
I apologize.
That's very fine. We can make that accommodation.
Okay.
Just state your name and address for it.
I have some documents for you. This is a copy of, would you like a copy?
No.
Of what I plan to say. And I only have one copy of my analysis of some of the expenditures. So if you decide you want to cut me off, you can read what I have to say. I'm going to try to keep it within three minutes.
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Laura McCormick and I am a lifelong resident of Douglas County. I am here today to express my opposition to the rubber stamp renewal of a contract with the law firm Monahan &amp; Monahan, a legal services firm providing guardian ad litem services in Douglas County.
Thanks.
I obtained various documents from the county comptroller's office, which include the original request for proposal for county GAL services dated March 2003. At that time, Nebraska Legal Aid provided GAL services for those needing it in Douglas County. At the time the bids were obtained in 2003, some analysis was conducted. However, sworn affidavit bids from various participants indicate there were numerous problems in the bidding procedures. Some bidders did not comply with the terms of the RFP, meetings were infrequent, and I can only assume inaccessible to members of the public. One of the names selected, a top-three finalist, was not awarded a contract. Instead, three private firms received the business of Douglas County. Please review my analysis of the sums currently paid by Douglas County taxpayers for GAL. I only have one copy of that, so I apologize. To date, this is 2010, $974,651 were spent on guardian ad litem services in Douglas County. Of the three firms that provide services, one goes to Thomas &amp; Contro, another, Monahan &amp; Monahan, and another, I can't pronounce the name, Type Jet and Simon &amp; Boyle. In terms of dollar value and rank, Mr. &amp; Contro ranks 28 in all the expenditures made by Douglas County in 2010. Monahan &amp; Monahan ranks 47, and the smaller firm, Simon &amp; Boyle, 172nd. If we add all the expenditures up together, for guardian ad litem services, the money that we spend would rank 15 in all the expenditures for 2010. And for all that money, we're not, for all that money we're spending, no bids were obtained. Well, continue. It defies my understanding how sums such as this do not merit analysis and input from many sources, most especially the families and children receiving the services. I first learned of the problems with the GAL system in Nebraska from firsthand experience. While the GALs involved in my children's lives were not appointed via juvenile court, many of the issues that exist in the GAL system are uniform across the various court systems. I was astonished to discover that the Unicameral commissioned a study entitled "Evaluation of the Guardian Ad Litem System in Nebraska" in 2009. The study identified 93 separate GAL systems. There is no uniform comprehensive set of practice standards for GALs. GALs are ineffective at communicating with their clients' needs to the court because the GAL doesn't always meet with the juvenile client or their families. GALs do not receive effective training or supervision, and all of this is in the report, which was conducted by a national organization that does work on behalf of children. And worst of all, Douglas County is specifically highlighted due to the caseload and flat-rate contract system that is used to compensate attorneys. GALs interviewed as part of the work on the NACCC report stated quite honestly that they are compensated on a flat-rate basis and there is no motivation to follow a case to completion because the pay is the same, no matter how many hours are worked. Should any of you desire to review the NACCC report, I am available to discuss it with you following the meeting. You may ask why I'm so interested in this issue. Please let me clarify. Two years ago, I was a suburban soccer mom in every sense of the word. My primary concerns were scheduling activities for my children, assisting my children with homework, and deciding which of several charitable organizations to involve myself with. My husband, a successful executive at Union Pacific Railroad, provided a comfortable living for our family. Unfortunately, he became involved with a woman who works for him and decided to abandon our family. As a stay-at-home parent for 17 years, it was devastating for my three children and myself. As our divorce case makes its way through District Court, two ad items have been appointed on behalf of my three children. My experience with these ad items is on the opposite economic spectrum from juvenile courts, as my husband and I are paying for the court-ordered GAL services. As of February 24th, 2010, my husband and I have spent $22,000 on GAL services. We have received next to nothing for the funds expended. My children, who range in age from 17 to 14, do not believe the ad items have done a good job. The ad items do not speak with the children on a regular basis. The ad item named on my son's behalf removed my son from my care without ever speaking to me. She has never witnessed any interaction between my son and I. The same ad item has not investigated reports I made to her regarding physical marks on my child's body. When I notified my children's longtime pediatrician of the marks, I showed him photographs on my computer, he called CPS. To date, I have yet to understand how my son received the marks. My son's GAL won't answer my inquiries. I can provide much more information regarding my experiences, but in the interest of brevity, I will leave it at that. Please consider tabling decisions related to contract renewal for the firm Monahan &amp; Monahan until bids can be solicited and information can be obtained from both the public and the judiciary as to how the GAL system can be improved in the state of Nebraska to benefit children in our state and county. And I might add, in my economic analysis, I also identify Clarinda Academy, an entity to which we paid $348,000, as well as an additional attorney, let's see, I believe it's Dornan Lundgarden, we paid them another 60 grand. This is Douglas County. There are no contracts in place. The comptroller's office has no contracts. I have no idea how you verify billing with no contracts. Evidently judiciary, I don't know, maybe somebody in state government. And the last thing I'll share with you is this document, which I received on Monday. The sheriff came to my house and served me with these papers. By the way, I've never had a lawyer prior to divorce, never been in trouble in my life, ever. Anyway, this is a protective order, and it's filed by my son's ad item. And it's telling me that I may not make photographs, audio, or video recordings, or depictions of any kind whatsoever of the minor child. This is my son. They're sensitive and proprietary, which includes, I can't send family photographs, I asked. I can't post photos of my son, who I had to fight to be able to see for four hours a week, I had to pay an attorney. I can't put any of those pictures online, I can't share them with family. There's emotional harm that may come to my son from me doing that per my son's ad item, who I guess knows his best interests. I don't really know. And it specifically says that I assume by speaking to you, I am violating my protective order. And what I have to say to each of you is, I will fight to the death to defend my children. I have been a good mom, and anyone who knows me in the community would attest to that. I refuse to be quieted or suppressed. I will do everything I can to change the ad item system in this county. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Miss McCormick. I appreciate you being here. We can reflect upon the information when we get to that contract. With that, we do have an agenda item under the committee, Child and Youth Services, that I would like to move up. Item Two is a resolution approving an addendum to an agreement with Heartland Family Services for the provision of a bed for youth who are determined by intake probation to be a risk to themselves or others, but who cannot be detained at the youth center. And Ms. Nicole Goldie from the County Attorney's Office would like to present some data that I've asked her to provide to the board on information of what has occurred in the first 90 days that we've had a bed with Heartland Family Services. And then the need to extend this contract we have with Youth Links so that we can continue our discussions with the state and the state providers to get some gaps cleared up. So Nicole, do you want to just, and Nicole has an appointment at 10:00 in court, so that's why I'm moving her up, so.
Thank you very much. We were able to determine over the last 90 days that the average number of times that these particular youth that were involved, ended up being involved and served by the contract, was 3.7 times that they had been on run. We had, one had missing juveniles 14 times, and there were a couple that this was their first missing juvenile, so that's what the average turned out to be. We were able to determine that 49 youth should have been served by the contract, but in actuality, only 43 were actually able to go to Youth Links for a variety of reasons. The reason that those other six were not able to go to Youth Links is because on a couple of occasions, the bed had already been used and Youth Links was full, so that child, we had to figure out something different between law enforcement probation and others involved. On other occasions, there were some technicalities in terms of whether or not the child could legally be detained, or whether or not they could not be, and the bed was not used. But 49 youth, again, did in fact need the bed, and 43 of them actually were able to use the bed. Of those 90 days, the bed was actually used 53 times, but we needed the bed, we needed 73 beds. And I know that sounds a little bit confusing, where's that 20? There were a couple of occasions where youth had to be taken directly from Youth Links to the hospital for sometimes medical reasons, sometimes psychiatric reasons, and we were not aware of when they would be released. Physicians were watching them hourly and daily. So over the weekend, had they been discharged from the hospital, they would have needed to go back to Youth Links to wait for the business week for court to have that hearing. So Youth Links had to leave that bed open to wait for them, should they be discharged over the weekend. But that child was not physically in the Youth Links bed because they were hospitalized. On other occasions, we had children involved in some sexual allegations, that Youth Links was not able to have a roommate in the room with them, which usually, there's two per room. So in essence, we were using two beds up because only one could be there. We broke down three other separate areas that I think would be helpful for the board to know. 23 of these youth also had warrants through juvenile court because of their running behavior. 17 out of those 23 legally could have been detained at Douglas County Youth Center, but because of the contract with Youth Links, 11 of them never saw the youth center. They were able to be screened by intake probation to go to Youth Links instead of youth center. Again, legally, they could have been at youth center, but the screening determined that they didn't need that level of secure confinement, and so they were able to be at Youth Links. When they came in front of the judge the next day, 11 occasions, the judge determined that that was accurate, appropriate, that they didn't need secure detention, even though legally they could have been there, and those children were never put at Douglas County Youth Center. Six of those 23 warrants indicated that it would not be legal for them to go to Douglas County Youth Center. So above for this contract, there would have been nowhere for those six youth to go. When they were picked up on the court-issued warrant, there would have been absolutely nowhere to put them. The last two breakdowns involve youth that were court-involved versus not court-involved, and youth that were HHS wards versus not HHS wards. With regards to active court involvement, 26 of these youth, of these 49 youth, were actively court-involved. There is a filing on them. Some of them are status offenses, meaning no law violation has occurred. Most commonly, they're truants or missing juveniles, or there are law violations. And 23 of them had no prior court involvement, there was no docket on them. What we saw as we progressed is that we moved from the court-involved kids, and as it became a little bit more known in the community of professionals working with this population, that there was this resource available. We started to pick up the population we were looking to address and to offer resources to, and that's the chronic runners that were not court-involved before this. When probation looked at the assessments that we received on every single one of these 49 juveniles, we reviewed assessments by probation and Youth Links, the feedback from the professionals that lead both of those agencies indicated that for the non-court-involved youth that were served by this contract, the resources by the parents had been exhausted. That but for this placement, this resource, this possibility, it wouldn't have succeeded. There would have been more calls to law enforcement to assist this family because they had nowhere else to go, and things were exploding in that family environment. The last breakdown was with regards to wards versus non-wards. Of the 49 youth, it was determined that 31 of them were not in the custody of Health and Human Services, and 18 of them were in the custody of Health and Human Services. The 31 that were not in Health and Human Services custody had to be taken to court to have a court hearing the next day. Of those 31, 17 were placed in the custody of Health and Human Services for out-of-home placement, because it would not have been appropriate for them to return home. 12 of them did not need to become state wards, and other resources were offered through the court system. Those options included Douglas County Youth Center, the Home on Electronic Monitoring Detention Program offered through Douglas County Youth Center, temporary orders, and on a couple of occasions, a decline by our office to file any further charges, but indication to the child that this happens again, that you will be filed on in juvenile court. That's the conclusion of the data that I have at this time, and if there's any questions to be answered.
Commissioner Kraft?
Could you remind me what would happen to the six youth who would not have had a place to go? Would we have put them in the youth center? And if we did, what would the consequences have been since they weren't candidates for that? Or where would they have gone?
To be completely frank, I do not know where they would have gone. They could not be detained at Douglas County Youth Center, but historically, most of our warrants indicated delivered to Douglas County Youth Center, and they would go there for that evening, and the next day, we would indicate to the court that legally, they cannot remain there. However, I believe that that puts our county in a very difficult position in that for that 24-hour period of time and longer, if it's over the weekend, we have one of these youth, a status offender, who hasn't violated a court order there over the weekend, waiting to get in front of a judge, just so we can have court-order different placement, that we could potentially be in violation of federal standards for detention on youth who have not committed a law violation and are not in violation of a court order.
Okay. Now, we contracted for 90 days, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And we contracted for one room per night?
One bed.
One bed per night, excuse me. We did not use one bed per night. So did we pay for those beds that went unused?
I believe, yes, sir, that the contract covered one bed per night, because we wouldn't know, there were some evenings that we needed three, and that's where you see the difference between, we utilized 53 actual beds, but we needed 73. So on those evenings where we needed three, and Youth Links was able to take one, we really needed those other two. On another night, there might have been the next two nights, that we didn't need one. Youth Links did try to accommodate us if we needed two or three on the same night. If they had another bed available, even though the county bed was filled, they did take that youth and worked with us on that, and I did include that in our data. But yes, I believe that the contract included payment for 90 beds, and again, we needed it 73 times.
Okay, and?
Commissioner, it's because we couldn't predict exactly which days, like I said, there'd be a day or two go by.
I remember that part of the conversation. I just couldn't remember if we'd committed paying for an unused bed or not.
Yes, because if we didn't, and that bed wouldn't be there.
Could be sold, so to speak.
Yes, they'd be fall.
Or rented.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Nicole? And again, the, what we found is that there are some unanswered issues that we need to work with the state and the state providers with. And I have asked for a meeting with those individuals and organizations for July 1st, but schedules, I think because of the 4th of July holiday, isn't working out too well, so we may have to pick another day. But what I need with this contract is just another 90 days, and you can see from the data that Nicole has presented, that there's a need, and it's been successful in keeping kids out of the youth center. But we need to tie up some of those gaps that we have with this contract, or with this service, between the state and the state's providers. So I'm just asking for an additional 90 days. So if anyone, does anyone else have any other questions or comments for Nicole? Commissioner Kraft?
Could this be approved for 30 days, so we can study it? Because those were a lot of statistics today. So that we can study the usage and what we need to do to tweak the contract, and what Heartland Family Services are willing to do to tweak the contract. Could we do it for 30 days?
I would be requesting the 90 days for the reason that that 30 days goes very, very These youth, especially given it's the summer months, it's picking up, it's constant, and the 30 days would come so quickly. This bed is being used constantly, on a regular basis, and so I would request the 90 days so that we can know that we have a plan in place for this population through the summer. And with regards to the data, I need to say that I do not keep this by myself. There are other professionals involved in this project, committed to assisting in this process, and so I want to make sure that that's clear as well, that many people that have helped.
And while I'm looking at the cost side, perhaps you can tell me what was the saving side, other than not having these kids go to the youth detention center? Do you have a dollar figure on that?
Well, no, I wouldn't be able to put a dollar figure on it, but to serve, in actuality, 43 juveniles and need to have served 49, I can't even begin to estimate those costs that could come. And for instance, the 23 that were not court-involved, those are the ones that we talked about the last time I was here, that but not for this intervention and getting them to Youth Links, getting the crisis stabilization in place, getting them before the court, possibly putting them in HHS custody for services, possibly getting them at home and a monitor. We wouldn't have intervened on those 23 kids. I couldn't even begin to say what they could be outdoing. And that's when we talked about the criminal aspect that then comes, when you don't immediately address their out-of-control behavior.
And are we doing follow-up on, are these youths being kept out of the system? Is this, in other words, is this, or is it not, an exercise in futility?
Some of them are being kept out of the system, some of them are not, but at this point, that they were coming into the system, or coming in with status offenses, uncontrollable behavior, before we've gotten to the point of criminal behavior, which is a very good thing, because the criminal behavior that we ended up seeing included a range from shoplifting to sexual assaults. When we looked back, and we also talked about last time, when we looked at the last five juveniles that were involved in homicide cases, when we looked back at their records, one of their first several entries always appeared to be that missing juvenile, not indicating that that was a cause. It was something that we kind of saw, that's like, maybe if we addressed this behavior at the beginning of a child's police record, we might be able to curtail the later serious criminal activity and out-of-control behavior.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to speak to Commissioner Kraft. Point of the 30, and I'm thinking the 90 days to the point Nicole makes, I think one of the issues there are, you know there's a betterment to the child, but you can't make the cost, the cost-benefit connection right now, and I think the 90 days will help do that. But also, there's a whole, there's some more numbers, I think, that I've heard, a different set of numbers, not, like, not different from these, but there's additional numbers that I've heard that we probably need to hear play out in 90 days and get a better understanding for, because the big thing about this is the 90 days is needed, because there's a whole lot of other stakeholders. I think personally, it needs to take some skin in the game, and it's going to take that to get them there, and able to understand everything entirely.
Yeah, and Nicole convinced me that it's the right thing to do. Okay? Thank you.
No other questions or comments? I would ask for a motion to approve that resolution under the Child and Youth Committee.
Sound move.
Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and thank you both for being here today. We'll move back to the presentation by our county treasurer, Mr. John Ewing. We'll move back to the presentation by our county treasurer, Mr. John Ewing, for receiving the NACO Achievement Award for the Treasurer's Business Model. Good morning, and thank you for allowing a presentation ahead of...
Sure, absolutely. Good morning.
Good morning.
What I will do, excuse me, is just give you a brief overview of this award, in terms of how we were fortunate enough as a county to actually receive it. This award was based on our innovative approach to county government and the use of technology to be able to provide better services for the citizens of Douglas County, such as our motor vehicle renewals, online and over the telephone, as well as our ability to pay property taxes, delinquent and current, online, as well as we were the first county in Nebraska to actually have the online tax law that I've talked to you about before. Through the utilization of these services, we've been able to be much more efficient in our operation in carrying out the same number of transactions, and actually having sixteen less full-time staff members. So we've been able to realize some efficiency because of that. We also have been recognized for our intergovernmental cooperation, that's working with the Department of Motor Vehicles to help get these things done, as well as ninety-two other county treasurers, and also, when we set up a couple of years ago, the platform for county and city government to be able to provide online services, that was a cooperative effort, where we actually had representatives from the county and the city participate in that, to help the citizens be able to utilize their government more efficiently across the board in Douglas County and in the city of Omaha. So we were recognized for this, and what we'd like to do is just present a copy of this award to the Douglas County Board, if you would like to place it anywhere for the public to review as well. It says, "Achievement Award Winner. This award is presented to Douglas County, Nebraska, for its program, Douglas County, Nebraska Treasurer's Business Model, in recognition of an effective and innovative program which contributes to and enhances county government in the United States." So I'll present this to you all, but thank you for giving us time to share with you this morning.
Congratulations to you and your staff for the great service to Douglas County, and you've made it definitely more efficient, because I'm a user too. So, Commissioner Boyle, I think, has...
Right. Well, first of all, Treasurer Ewing, I'm very proud to be taxpayer in this community when you run your office like you are. You're doing a terrific job. I have a special connection to the office, obviously. My father-in-law was treasurer for thirty-seven years, and I am familiar with it from that point of view, too. You have taken the office to a new level. You're delivering service that the taxpayers do need, and at a cost that's reduced. I was out in South Omaha, got my license plates renewed, stood in line a little bit, but we'll talk about that, with some fellow people from downtown, by the way. But anyway, you are doing a terrific job, and I just want to add my two cents to it. Keep it up. I was very proud at the last NACO meeting, this was brought up to the entire board, there were thirty-some people there, and I was very proud that it was discussed, and you were discussed in glowing terms. Thank you.
If you use the online or mail, there's no waiting.
Well, I had, it was actually from my granddaughter, I had to get a title.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say that I appreciate all of the compliments that people give me, but it's really about trying to build a team, not only within our office, but across county government, and that's what we've tried to do, is to build a team within our organization, but certainly, working with the county board, working with the other county organizations, as well as the other ninety-two treasurers who needed to go along with some of these things to make it happen. So it's really about teamwork, and that's what we've always tried to do over the last four and a half years, so that's why we wanted to come and present this to you all as well, because you're a part of the team, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Thank you, and with that, we'll move to public hearings. The first one is the sale of surplus land in King Lake. This was continued from Tuesday, the Tuesday, June 21st meeting, and action can be taken today. And I think our, we got, received the answers to the questions that were asked last week, so with that, is there anyone else in the chamber wishing to speak during the public hearing on declaring the sale of surplus land in King Lake? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Next public hearing is the budget hearing on our fiscal 2011, 2012 proposed budget. And what I have asked is for our budget director to just go over some of the material quickly for us, and he's going to come down in front, so we can lay the graphs on the table for them to be able to see as well. And Joe, when you start, if you could just state your name and the office you're with.
Okay. I'm Joe Lorenz, I'm Director of Budget and Finance for the county, so I'd just like to take everybody through a summary of the budget that we've been doing on a fairly high-level summary basis. Okay, the first chart I want to start out with is really the headline chart, and that is that through the collaborative efforts that we've done between the Finance Committee, the full county board, meeting with the elected officials and the different department heads, we've been able to come up with a budget that will keep the county tax levy unchanged at twenty-six point four-six cents per hundred dollars of value. We've got, this is a process that we've been working on over the past several months, and I appreciate all the hard work everybody's put into it. I think it was really a best efforts on part of all the different people involved from the county, and the result is a budget that I feel is aggressive, but yet achievable, which I really think is the goal of a budgeting process. Just to refresh everybody's memory, that in terms of the total tax levy for a person, let's say a resident of Omaha, that the lion's share of the budget really goes to the schools and the city of Omaha, whereas the Douglas County levy only counts for about twelve percent of the total tax levy. So, in terms of the whole scope of things, we are a relatively small player in this. So some highlights here from the budget. As I said before, the key is that we have come up with a balanced budget with no proposed tax increase or utilization of reserves to fund projected expenditures. So that's the key point. The overall proposed budget for next year is three-hundred-and-eleven million dollars, which is eleven point two million, or three point five percent lower than this year's budget. The general fund proposed budget is approximately flat with this year at a hundred-and-sixty-one million, and that's really driven by the fact that expense reductions were offset by the inclusion of the Corrections，在 inmate benefit account, and the increase in employee fringe benefits that we received from our health benefit consultants, which account for about three-point-six million in increase. So that offset the reduction that we had from the other departments and the elected officials. As everyone's pretty well aware, when we went out with this, we requested that all offices and functions reduce their budgets by four percent, which was the second year in a row that we asked people to do that, so it was a pretty serious challenge, and we were able to, for the most part, achieve that reduction, as the total proposed budget is three and a half percent lower than a year ago. One of the key assumptions that allowed us to do this is the assumption that the overall county property tax valuation will increase one point six percent, which is, in dollar terms, about six-hundred million, which will, during this budget period, produce about eight-hundred thousand in additional property tax revenues from that assumption. Another key point that we've talked about in doing this budget is that this no tax increase was achieved despite the loss of over five million dollars in state revenues and Keno funds that the county had historically received, which, again, added to the challenges that we had in preparing this budget. So today is the public hearing, I'm sure we'll have some speakers talk about the budget, but we are anticipating that the budget will be adopted on July 12th, and that the hearing regarding the final tax rate with the assessor will be received on August 20th. These charts don't really show up that well, there's a lot of numbers here, but again, just the key points to make is that the general fund was just below flat, down point one five, point one-five percent, a little less than one percent. And then in going to the total operations supported by property taxes, that increased about a half percent, and that was really driven by a million-dollar increase in our salary adjustment account, which is what we put in there to really fund the union contracts that are in the process of negotiation or are sitting in front of the CIR. So that was the driver of that, and that, in a lot of ways, is kind of a fixed cost that we have to deal with. So that's what drove the very slight increase in operations supported by property tax. Then if you go to the total overall budget, again, a lot of numbers, the key is that through different reductions and things like the road fund, which had less projects, and the total overall expense budget for Douglas County is three-hundred-and-eleven point four million, which is down three and a half percent from the prior year, which is within our guidelines, and really, having been reduced is what allowed us to meet this requirement of not increasing our tax levy. And then just to quickly summarize, on the other side, you know, we have the budget expenses, there's also the revenues that we account with to have a balanced budget. This pie chart shows it, and the key point here is that the county is forty-seven percent funded by taxes, with the largest component still remaining, the property tax revenue that we receive, which equals about forty percent of our budget. And this really is a key point for us going forward, that given the overall economy and property values, that we are not really expecting any significant increase in property tax valuations going forward. So, well, this year, we met for our goal of a balanced budget without a tax increase, it looks like we're going to have a similar challenge next year. We really don't see the situation improving greatly in the near future. And then, as I said, forty-seven percent is funded by taxes, the rest is really funded by the fees the departments generate, grants that we receive from various departments of the federal and state government, and also things like Medicare and Medicaid for the health center. So that, those are sources of revenue as a county, which this year will bring, are projected to bring in about two-hundred-and-thirty-five million dollars of revenue. And then the last chart I had is a little bit more detail on the summary of revenues, which show that revenues are going up year over year by a little over two million dollars, and that's primarily driven by the increases in the property tax proceeds, which, as I said before, eight-hundred thousand from the new projected net amount from the new valuations of this year, and about two-point-two million that will result from, you know, the way property taxes work in our budget year, we get last year's increase, we get half of it in this coming year. So that's two-point-two million, and the eight-hundred thousand give us a net increase in property tax proceeds of about three million. And the total revenues will increase about two-point-two million, so that's really driven by the increase in property tax proceeds that we're projecting to realize. So that's the kind of thirty-thousand-foot summary of the budget, you know, with the headline being, it's a balanced budget without having to increase taxes or use our reserve. So I'd be open to any questions any of you might have about the budget.
No questions? We appreciate the overview. We are still in the public hearing. If there's anyone here wishing to speak to the board about the county's proposed budget, now is the time.
Hi there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you want to just step up here. My name is Jason Johans, I represent the Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. We have a short presentation, if I could get the slide up here. And my address is forty-seven eighteen North One-Fiftieth Street. Of course, that's Omaha. I shouldn't say that, I guess it could be Dunington or Valley.
Kind of out in France.
Yeah.
Kind of out in France.
All right. And by the way, I want to congratulate Commissioner Kraft and Commissioner Morgan for the great job they did with all their work on the Finance Committee, as well as the rest of, the rest of the board, and, I'm sorry, I forgot Joe's name, last name. Lorenz, that's right. And congratulate them on what a great job they did with the budget and not raising taxes in a difficult year. Okay, the background, we sent every commissioner a letter outlining the concerns we have. It was a four-page letter, and what we're going to do is, we're going to go over this letter on a very high level, and try and keep it to about, hopefully, you know, five-to-ten-minute presentation. What we wanted to do was, we wanted to have a starting point as a discussion for this letter. We don't claim to be experts, but we want to be. We want to understand what is going on in Douglas County, and as well, other taxing entities. And so we've tried to validate information, but we realized that there's a lot of time constraints, and we needed to start this process earlier. So please, you know, if you find something that's not consistent, please forgive us. We tried to contact, and we tried to work back and forth, but we ran out of time. There is one correction on the letter with the Douglas County Board of Tourism, I accidentally slipped into the applications, and used the numbers from the application process instead of what was actually approved, so please forgive me on that. And in writing this letter, the NTF reviewed large-budget items, staffing, and benefits, and Chad's going to cover a couple of these items.
Hi, I'm Chad Wilson, my address is five sixty-three North One-Hundred-Fifty-second Avenue Circle. We're just going through the budget, some of the health department, one thing we noticed was, after reviewing the health center budget, we noticed that the 2010, 2011 budgeted revenue for the health center was about thirty million dollars, and the budgeted expenses for the health center was about forty-one million dollars. And just when the budget that was proposed for next year, for the 2011, 2012, these numbers don't change significantly. But for the 2010, 2011 budget, we see this amounts to eleven point eight million loss. That, you know, represents over twenty-five percent of expenses, and over thirty-three, over a third of the revenue. I mean, of course, like I said, as Jason mentioned, we had time constraints, I mean, if there's other items that are influencing this number, we'd be more than happy to learn about it and stuff, but just basing, looking at a very top level, that's a pretty big loss for a health center, so that was just one of the questions we had. Another thing we wanted to briefly go over was some of the employee fringe benefits. In the private sector, many, for example, myself, many employees pay around five-hundred dollars a month for family health insurance. Now, we didn't go into detail investigating health benefits for Douglas County employees, but every hundred-dollar annual increase in health premiums, or eight dollars and thirty-three cents a month, will decrease taxpayers' expense by two-hundred thousand. So that's just something should be considered, maybe. Then there's also the pensions. According to the Douglas County Employee Retirement Plan from November 2010, on page two, the Douglas County pension system is only fifty-eight percent funded. Unless reforms occur, the situation will probably worsen... Unless reforms occur, the situation will probably worsen and result in maybe even scaling back basic county services. Some of the suggestions we had is requiring employees to pay at least 9 percent of their pay to the pension system, pay pension benefits to base pay only, raising retirement age to 60, and employees who do retire earlier than 60 should maybe earn lower pension payments. Another thing we suggest is possibly is making a transition to 401K-defined plans, which would be supported by county contributions and matched by employee savings. These contributions, you're probably all aware, are not subject to federal or state income taxes. Thus, the size of the retirement package depends on both the employee savings and investment returns over the working career. That way, the gain or loss risk for these type of plans shifts from the county to the employee. So the cost, unlike defined benefits plans, the cost of providing this benefit is entirely predictable and transparent. So. Excuse me. And then there's a couple other changes we recommend or would like the board to consider is calculating pensions on a basis of low-risk interest rates like treasury bonds, not, according to the thing, is 7 or 8 percent currently anticipated. Tie pension benefits to investment earnings and county revenue growth. And as you can probably read the rest, establish a rule that the county will never again create an unfunded pension liability, which according to this, it's only 58 percent funded. And then annual pay hikes of 4 to 5 percent are too high in the current climate and help cause pension problem. So I'll go ahead and turn this back over to Jason. Thank you for your time.
Okay. And another thing that we looked at was staffing. And the NTF asked three questions, and basically, did the departments have excess capacity, or what we call the politically incorrect term, overstaffed? Were the employees paid above a certain threshold, or the un-PC term is overpaid? Or did the department have a low employee-manager ratio, or basically overmanaged, or there was a high or low span of control? And the results that we find, the good news is, for overstaffed, we had difficulty finding benchmarks for certain departments, but in general, the departments we could find benchmarks for, we didn't see overstaffing issues. So that's really good. And for, as far as overpaid, or what we considered above the 75th percentile, we looked at job-by-job analysis for the top 10 highest-salary expense departments, and we only found two departments that had salaries above the 75th percentile. Those were the corrections and sheriff's departments. And the biggest problem that we could see was what we termed, you know, the low employee-to-manager ratio. Now, one of the things that could be influencing this low employee-to-manager ratio is because there have been so much cuts from the bottom that maybe, you know, that's caused a low employee-to-manager ratio. But we just wanted to mention these concerns that we had for departments above 750,000 in salary expenses. Basically, these departments were two to three employees, employee-to-manager ratio, the clerk of the court, the purchasing treasurer, and the comptroller. And there's some notes that we have, that we counted assistant managers as part of the treasurer, and counting administrators, like the tax administrator, as part of the comptroller. So we couldn't get that resolved in time, whether those were, should be included or not. Also, there were some that were between 3 and 1/2 and 5, community service, constructions, corrections, environmental services, maintenance, public properties, and sheriff. And now, if every one of these departments increased to a 6 to 1 manager ratio, the savings would be 1.3 million. Now, we realize that's a potential that's not, you know, I guess, real world, but we believe there could be significant savings with changes to that. The final point is the visitor promotion council. We just wanted to bring this up. Last year, there was $2.35 million awarded to 50 entities for the visitor promotion council. One of the issues we had is, we looked at cost per non-Douglas County visitor. In other words, you know, for what we invested, how many people came in? And we found that there was one theater that was paid, now, always, we take the most extreme example, right? But we did find one theater that was paid $320 for every non-Douglas County visitor. But, you know, we're just wondering, what should that threshold be? Should it be, you know, $10 per non-Douglas County visitor, 25? We just also have questions, and I'll just go through this real quickly. Missing numbers, dilution, would it be better to put more money into 20 entities, let's say, than less money into 50 entities? And just one idea we had was self-promotion, to create ads and a website for smaller cities around the Omaha metro area, and just say, hey, we have a block of hotel rooms, we'll connect it with a theater, opera performance, a sports performance, and see if we can connect and raise money, raise funds that way. And that way, we're promoting Douglas County, instead of just giving money to entities. So overall, I just want to thank you for holding down the property tax levy or keeping it the same next year as it was this year. And we sent a letter, and we hope to receive a response to the questions that we posed in the letter. And just in general, we enjoy working with you this year. We look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And what we've done in the past, and I'll get that set up, is the staff and I have met with your group and gone over all of the questions, and we'll put them in writing as well. But that seems to be a real good explanation or place to explain all of the things that you brought up, and so we'll get that set up as well. But as always, I mean, I appreciate the input. You know, again, this is your budget. You're the taxpayers. That's who we work for, and we appreciate the in-depth analysis and look that you've done on our budget. So we appreciate that. Commissioner Boyle?
I'd like to add my two cents to it, and also on a personal note, I appreciate the courtesy with which you made your presentation. It's not a slash and burn. There weren't any, I didn't feel any arrows coming this way. It's very, very useful. And you're going to find yourself on some board or commission if you're not careful. So we know your name, we know where you live. So I do appreciate that, and I know you have jobs in the real world, but we need people like you to serve on these boards and commissions that bring the common sense to it that we really need, and sometimes it's difficult, so I hope you'll consider that in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah, I'd like to, I guess, commend you for the manner usually when a tax presentation comes forward, not that.
We're not used to being treated nice.
But.
Well, we're not used to having a property tax day to say either.
But, I mean, in addition to what Commissioner Borges is going to do with the overall budget, I definitely think, you know, just from your elementary analysis, you got a pretty grasp of it, at least personally, from one of our cause drivers, which is the criminal justice and the youth, juvenile justice piece, I'll be more than happy to sit with you and tie together with you some of the plugs that are there, and some of the things that, you know, we definitely don't have any control about. And I would definitely like to sit down with your group to really talk with you on an informative basis, to try to inform the public about some of these really mandates that we don't have any chance to comply with, so I'm more than open to do that whenever you're free.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Morgan?
I too would like to thank you, Jason, Chad, for that. And if you don't mind, I've received your letter, but if you can send us the sheets of what you presented today, that'd be great, too. But thanks for the manner in which you presented this.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing on the 11-12 budget?
Good morning, Commissioners. RJ Brown.
Morning.
1501 Avenue, Old Cartel Lake, Iowa. I'd like to bring up a few things on the errors of the revenue for this budget, and they're very, very discretionary, that I'd say. The Keno funds for this budget is $250,000, but last year was $1,300,000. Did we start slowing down?
The city opted not to renew the contract as it was written in the formula that was used, so they came up with a new formula, so we're receiving less.
The city's getting the money.
Right.
Instead, because there's a shortfall in that. Another thing is, there's a line slash on the bonds, selling of the bonds. And you know the interest rate's the lowest it's ever been, so you can resell those bonds. And you got it slashed out completely. It's blank. That's another error that I can see. The inheritance tax is another area. The hotel motel tax, if you take a look at the line items and that, is a lot less. This is the most conservative revenue source so that you can get a profit at the end of the year. Whoever estimated this lowballed you. And I remember Bernie Simons back in '88, and Mike Boyle on their budgets. But we had a projection a little higher than that. It's not pessimistic, it's optimistic and reality, because there is homes being built in Douglas County. There is office space being built in Douglas County. As PJ Morgan knows, it's not pessimistic, it's optimistic. And I can tell you, they lowballed this, so you're going to make a little bit more windfall profit. The reason why they did this, I think, and I think they did that in '83 the same way, when Bernie Simons had a few things to say, and he hired an expert at UNO to get the projections. And those projections were higher, and found out back then, they were right. And this is too low projections of revenue, very low. And when you hold the line, you're basically getting more money, because it does rise on those projections. Another thing is, lodging and tourism is up. It doesn't show in this budget at all. I go back and look at all the revenue, every one of you, and find out that there is more money, and don't fish it out at the end of the year and say, wow, jeez, we kept the levy the same. You could have lowered the levy. And by those projections, if they were up higher, you could do that. So don't fool us and fool the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, RJ. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing on our budget?
I'm Chair Roger Morrissey, Douglas County Assessor. I'd just like to go on record saying a 4 percent cut in budget makes it very difficult for the assessor's office to meet its state-mandated obligations. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board on the proposed budget? Dean Nun? July 12th is the date that we will be voting on the budget. Therefore, I will close the public hearing, and we'll have this back on our agenda on the 12th, and we'll continue our discussions with your group, Jason and company. Thank you. With that, we'll move to Commissioner Rogers.
Yeah, I figured this is going to be the probably last public statement we'll have on it. I definitely wanted to commend yourself, Commissioner Morgan, and Commissioner Kraft on the diligence with the budget. This was a very, this is very hard, and I think that's all that can be said, particularly now while the paper's here and the focus is on it. I think this was a monumental task, to say the least. Few people know how hard it was to get here, and I think, you know, you all should be commended for the work you did to get here.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers? Okay. With that, we will move to the committees, and the first one being the Finance Committee. Commissioner Kraft and Morgan?
Yes, and since it comes right after the public hearing on the budget, Commissioner Borgenson, Commissioner Morgan, and myself, along with our Chief Financial Officer, Joe Lorenz, spent countless hours going over with department heads and analyzing and asking many of the critical questions, such as the staffing ratio, such as the number of people, talking about the $11 million loss on the Health Center. And what people need to understand is, we are the payers of last resort. We are by law required to provide these services, whether we make money on it or lose money on it. And providing health services the way the county has to, you know, the mental health system, the Alzheimer's unit, Medicaid doesn't pay for it, and there are people who fall through the gap, and Medicaid and Medicare doesn't take any of it. So this has to be, the public needs to be cognizant that we are mandated to provide these services, and incarcerating people, that cost goes up. Providing healthcare, that cost goes up. Contractual law, we cannot change contracts we're in with the unions without negotiating those changes. And we have attempted to negotiate some of the changes in healthcare provisions and in what the employee pays, and unfortunately, the CIR has ruled against us and issued what they call status quo orders, which is costing us 1.2 million a year, am I right? And our hands are tight. We cannot step outside of contract law. Commissioner Morgan, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I think we're appreciative of the staff and everyone's participation in where we are today, but I think this is just the beginning. I mean, as far as we have 2011, but I think all of us know that we're going to probably be meeting once or twice a month, starting to work on 2012 and trying to figure out the mandated services, unmandated, et cetera, and work toward that $10 million cut, because we know, as I've said before, we're not going to be able to do the 4 percent cut next year for certain, unless there's some others who want to volunteer to work on the Finance Committee, and I'd be glad to give him my post on that. So it is just the beginning.
And Commissioner Morgan and I have looked very carefully at the mandated services that we provide and the non-mandated services we provide. And as far as we can tell, the non-mandated services actually are relieving the pressure on the mandated, and on average, saving us more than 2 to 1. Okay, some of these non-mandated services we provide are saving 3, 4, and 5 to 1 on the mandated side, such as the item we had earlier today with Heartland Family Services providing overnight stay for non-status offenders, trying to keep them out of the system, because once they get into the system, it's not one night, it's multiple nights, it's 30 days, it's 60 days. It's the cost of the human health and services that they get put into in the foster care system. So these non-mandated services, even though they may not be required, are saving us money on what is required. And again, I asked this a couple weeks ago, if anybody knows of any non-mandated services we can provide that would keep people out of the system, out of corrections, out of the court system, because these are our charges, we have to pay for this. Because these are our charges, we have to pay for this, out of the health center, out of the STD clinics. Let us know. We're open to ideas. We're trying to reinvent, to the degree permissible by law, county government to save all of us, because we're all taxpayers' money. So again, thank you, PJ. Anything else? Thank you. Oh, and the report is as presented.
Well, I too, as Chair, want to echo on what Commissioner Rogers was saying about the work that you've done as the Finance Committee. It's been exceptional this year and very hard this year, and we appreciate the hard work that you both have put in and the time you've put in, so thank you. With that, we'll move to the Child and Youth Services. We've already taken up one item, but there's another one.
Are the changes incorporated into... And I know, I don't know if we... Do we need to bring that back to approve those other changes? Or do we... Or we need to... Okay. As to... Let me start off by saying in general, to continue your point, Ms. McCormick, I think it's safe to say the board has been pondering the spirit of your statement for probably about the last year, and been trying to find a way to get into it. One of the ways that we began to go into it is to... We had a couple of meetings to form some accountability standards to put into some of the contract to give us a base of knowledge. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that we're masters of the guardian ad litem system, we're starting, it is a massive system, and we're trying to get a grip on that. So the contract before you today for the renewal incorporates the new standards that we talked about over the last couple of months. And in addition, there could be some additional changes that comes to this and the other two contracts, based on what the Supreme Court puts out in regards to their standards. So that will be coming sometime in the future. Before you is the renewal of the Monahan contract and incorporates the new standards. As of right now, I would recommend approval with the spirit of what we just noted today to try to continue to fine tune it. And, you know, personally to you, Ms. McCormick, I'm more than happy to meet with you to get a better understanding and to try to incorporate some of your concerns, to get some questions there in the future. So with that, I would move, and then the Chair can go from where she wants to go.
Is there a second to approve the contract? Any... Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I only wanted to add that, a couple of things. First of all, the guardian ad litem that are appointed represent the child, not the parents, not anyone else. And so there are times when there'll be five attorneys in the courtroom in juvenile court representing four children, four siblings that may have different interests. There may be a grandparent who's custodial, there may be an attorney there privately paid or so forth. But this is required, this is not an option. And it is less expensive for us, believe it or not, to do it through these contracts, rather than having the public defender, which has conflicts then, because he can't represent more than one client. If there are two or three siblings, they all have to have an attorney that is not from the same firm even. So that's why we have multiple guardian ad litem. It's very complicated, it's expensive, it's mandated. This is one of those services that Commissioner Kraft was talking about that we can't get out of, not that we want to, but the point is, we have no choice. So we're trying to find the least expensive, most effective, legal way to provide this service. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to reiterate what Commissioner Rogers said, we have, over the course of these contracts, talked about how to make those measurable outcomes and accountabilities within those contracts, and this is the start of that. And we're not saying that it's the end-all of what we need to do in tweaking the contracts, but this is the start. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Commissioner Kraft?
Mrs. McCormick, you wanted to say something, please come.
I did. I appreciated your commentary, actually, Mr. Kraft, about the services, the mandated services. A perfect example is Clarinda Academy. The youth that go there are... It's because Douglas County is the provider of last resort. There is no contract with Clarinda Academy. So while I understand the concept of we have to provide services for youth, it makes absolutely no sense to me, as a taxpayer, that we can have services that we're receiving and there's no contract. And so I... Excuse me?
If I could explain that. Clarinda Academy many times is ordered by the court, and when a child is ordered there, that judge initiates that contract.
That may be...
It's not a contract that we necessarily enter.
I understand, but again, we all live in Douglas County, and we are paying for these services. And so while the judiciary may order these services, there is no accountability whatsoever, and I have a major problem with that. And Mr. Boyle, I do in fact understand the conflicting interests of ad litem appointed for children versus attorneys, but I take great exception to some of your comments, because if I would hazard... I would hazard a guess, if any of you would raise your hand, have any of you ever had an ad litem appointed to serve someone in your family? My guess would be no. And I would have been in that very same boat myself, had it not been for this divorce. And what I can tell you is, there are serious issues in the guardian ad litem system. And I do believe that children who suffer extreme economic hardship, perhaps abuse, they deserve, they deserve representation in court by an attorney who actually is advocating on their behalf, not because they're being paid $50 a flat rate case, and the attorney may never even meet with the family or the children. The other problem, I went to go visit a man who is in charge of juvenile court. I've never been to juvenile court there, but for the grace of God, go I. Let's hope I never have any interaction. But when I asked that man, I said to him, "Let's pretend I'm a resident of Douglas County, but I don't speak English, and maybe I'm a really good parent, and my kid's getting in trouble, and I'm doing everything I can, and the kid goes to juvenile court. What happens to me? Do you have... Do you offer anything in writing that explains what's going to happen, how this process works? Is it bilingual?" The answer is no. Most of the staff that are employed at these firms, they don't speak Spanish. The agency that used to perform these services was Nebraska Legal Aid, and they should have received, back in 2003, a portion of the work. I have no idea, I'm assuming it was politics, which is why their contract wasn't renewed. Every one of those attorneys is in this business to make money. Nebraska Legal Aid is a not-for-profit. I am a person who is currently before the court, and I haven't made a dime raising my kids and taking care of people in the community. I've made nothing. I believe passionately in defending kids, taking care of kids, but there has to be accountability, and there is none. That is my problem.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. And to some degree, I do honestly agree with you in terms of the contracts with the providers that the courts appoint or place these children in. And we have had discussions with this board on the years that I've been on here, that we should work with the judiciary to have certain contracts with providers for certain things. And that discussion is ongoing, it's not lost or just not continually on our books to discuss. So while some of the things are out of our control, I think I can honestly say to you that your comments are taken to heart, and we will continue those discussions to try to make the system better.
And if I could interrupt just one second, it seems as though it has been a continual discussion with this board, almost on a, at least on every other week basis, in our executive sessions, when we're dealing with litigation, amongst us in our committees, where we're trying to control the out-of-home placement cost and the methods, but again, we have no control over the judiciary. And that's been a contentious issue on the budget, probably for decades, but at least since I've been on the board. But your comments are well aimed and well taken, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
And we do... I'd like to give credit to Commissioner Rogers, as far as the Chair of our Child and Youth. He's really taken these issues and put a lot of energy into it. And again, our work is not done, and I do appreciate so much you being courageous enough to come forward and tell us what you think and what you think we should look at. I do appreciate that. Commissioner Duda?
Thank you, and I appreciate Ms. McCormick sharing with us some of the challenges that we face with the system, and we know there are challenges. I just want to add one little thing, and that is, one of the firms that we contract with does have a couple of Spanish-speaking attorneys working in the guardian ad litem world, so we do at least have that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the renewal of the contract with Monahan and Monahan? Seeing none? There's one out there.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move to the Community Services Committee. There's one item. Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I don't have anything about it, Commissioner Rogers. It's just a basic reallocation. The organization came in under just action for reallocation of funds to finish out a building project, so that's pretty much it. And I would ask for motion approved.
Second?
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Kraft? Motion passes.
Next, we'll move to the Criminal Justice Committee. Commissioner Boyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's two items on. The first is a resolution directing that the hiring process for the Director of Corrections be conducted through the Criminal Justice Committee, placed on the agenda by the Chair of the Board of Corrections. Commissioner Borgeson?
And again, it's pretty self-explanatory. We have a big task in front of us with the announcement of the resignation of our current director, and we need a good process, and we have a committee structure in place, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
The second item is a resolution appointing Deputy Director Mark Foxall as Interim Director of Corrections. This is placed on the agenda by Commissioner Duda.
I would make the motion to approve.
I would like to speak to it. I thought quite a bit about this resolution, and I toyed with the idea of playing nice and being quiet, and going along to get along, and all those phrases. And I have a real serious problem with this resolution. And the reason I do is that the three commissioners met in a restaurant, and I believe with our office manager, Kathy Kelly, along with Mr. Foxall, I'm not sure who all attended.
Mr. Foxall was not present.
Okay, he wasn't present. And I would assume that one of the commissioners at least had spoken to him, or he expressed the interest maybe in being appointed, I don't know. But public business was conducted in a restaurant. There were three commissioners, and the purpose of getting together was to decide to put this on the agenda. These things are always amusing to Commissioner Duda, but to me, it's serious business.
Okay, now, just let's keep it...
Well, when he starts laughing...
I am not laughing, Commissioner. I am really tired of you making things up to blame me.
Commissioner Duda, please, let's keep our tempers down.
If he will say truthful...
I think I mean truthful.
Keep notes of what you do not believe is correct information that Commissioner Boyle is talking about, and then you can rebut after that. Commissioner Boyle, please try to just keep it professional.
Thank you, I will. So I contacted the Attorney General's Office and spoke to Mr. Comer, who's in charge of the public, the open meetings law, and he did not see that there was a clear violation of state law. When three commissioners meet for the purpose of making a decision about who's going to be appointed an acting director, and then coming back to the civic center and getting the fourth vote, if it's not a violation of the open meetings law, it's as close as you could get. I think it's a very fine line. And these kinds of decisions that affect the public should be made in full public view as we're doing today, but we're doing it after the decision's been made. So, you know, this is the same thing that happened with the budget last year, where property taxes were increased. It was an effort to control things and make decisions, basically outside of not consulting commissioners who, like myself, who ask questions, who want to know what's going on and be involved. And it's not right. And I think what I'm going to do, if there's... I'm going to pursue the possibility of a violation of the open meetings law, and I spoke to the Accountability and Disclosure Commission as well. The director there thought it was illegal to poll commissioners, particularly when you have, for a purpose of meeting. Three commissioners can go to lunch and discuss, and I think four or even five can go to lunch and have discussions about things. Not county business, though. And three shouldn't do it either, and come back and present a motion and get the fourth vote, and make this decision and this commitment before the public, and the public is excluded. This is a huge budget over there, exceeding $30 million. And I assume Mr. Foxall wants to be named the permanent director, and maybe that deal's already been cut too, I don't know. But the letter of the law was followed, but not the spirit. I think... I hope we learn from this, and in the future, that a single commissioner won't attempt to manage and do things to the board that prevents it from acting in public as it should, that won't manipulate the vote. This decision rightly belonged with the Chair of the County Board, who serves as the Chair of the Board of Corrections. I am the person who is ironically named and charged with the corrections, so I'm supposed to be the one with the oversight and was not involved in this decision. So as a matter of conscience, regardless of the ability of Mr. Foxall, I will be voting in opposition to this resolution, and I hope those of you who feel that the line was crossed will do the same. Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes. The meeting was not for the purpose you're stating. The meeting was to discuss an attack made verbally against one of our commissioners who was at the meeting, when he had not participated in the reason he was attacked. Now, the discussion on the deputy chief or deputy director was incidental. It was not the intent. Second of all, you know full well that this was not a violation of the open meeting laws. And if you don't know, I suggest you go back and read the open meeting laws again. It may have been a few years since you have. We are entitled to have three members discuss issues if we wish. It does not mean we're polling. It does not mean we're doing anything illegal, as you're trying to attempt to say. It is that we are having an honest discussion. And it doesn't mean we all agreed, okay? It might be that we did, but it doesn't mean we did, the fact that three people have met. So the assumptions you're making are based upon a faulty premise, and I find that offensive. And you're intelligent enough to know that, and you'd like to use words to try to berate and belittle us and make issues out of non-issues, including your continual beratement of the correction system, when you know it's the same thing over and over and again. And it's just not right for this board to have to tolerate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I don't berate anyone. I ask questions, I think, when there's waste in government, and I ask the questions about how this spending is going and programs that are not needed and are not required that cost a lot of money. I ask questions about them, and you do too. I ask questions about them, and you do too, Commissioner Kraft, and that's to your credit. But what happened this time, I don't, I don't disagree that three Commissioners can get together, but a decision was made to support a person being appointed, and then a Commissioner came back to the Civic Center and got the fourth vote. He then came in and told me what had happened, and I was very sharp with him. I didn't yell, but I did, I did explain to him that I thought it was inappropriate for him to be doing this, that this belonged to the Commissioner, Commissioner Borgeson. And that it was just, you know, he doesn't run things, and it's not his, it was not his place to do this. And had he brought this, suggested to Commissioner Borgeson, and put this on the agenda, I would probably be voting for it today. But the questions that I ask, I know that it's not a violation, but it's as close as you can come, Commissioner Kraft. When you have a meeting and make a decision, which you did apparently, to support someone and then come back, get the fourth vote, that's not a normal, that's not a normal course of things. That's something that shouldn't be done. And I do intend to look into it, because I think it's, it leaves out three of us who were not involved. The reason we weren't there, because it violates the open meetings law. We weren't invited to lunch to discuss this. So, I don't take this as a personal attack. I take it as, for me, a vote of conscience, that I can't support something that was done out of the public view. And I'm quite familiar with the open meetings law, and so I appreciate your suggestion. I'd read it again, and I will, but, and I know this is not a violation, but it is as close as you can get. The effect is the same.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Duda?
I really should stay quiet, but I just have to point out how we just got done. And I agree with what a great job the Finance Committee did on the budget. The three of you that met over and over and over again, that I wasn't allowed to attend, but I'm okay with that. I get how it works. You did a good job. I like the end product. I have my opportunity for input now, just as we all do now. Decisions are often started in groups of two or three and then spread to the Board. Not anything out of the norm. I'm not asking for an investigation into how the Finance Committee developed the budget. I think you did a good job, even though there were three of you in closed meetings over and over and over again. Thank you.
Well, I probably shouldn't say anything either, but that analogy, Commissioner Duda, is just wrong, because the Finance Committee, that's their job. That goes through the finance, all of the budget items, we worked, the Finance Committee. This was an appointment, a decision that was needing to be made by this Board of Corrections on placing someone in an interim position because of the resignation of the current Director. And logically, that should have gone through the Criminal Justice Committee or the Board of Corrections. So, I completely agree, though. Two or three Commissioners can meet at any time, any place, about anything, and go and get their fourth vote. But you, of all people who have been here the longest, know the process, and that's what I have an issue with, is the process. Natural progression of a chief deputy moving into a Director, interim Director position once that person leaves is natural progression, but it's how we got there that I do take personal exception to. It, to me, it was disrespecting the two people, the two Commissioners, who have oversight of those areas. And so, the analogy of using the Finance Committee meeting with three Commissioners to discuss the budget, that, that's just a wrong analogy to use, because that was the proper process to use. With that, if there are no other questions or comments, did we have a motion and a second? There's a motion and a second on item two. Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I would like to get to the focus of the, of what we're trying to do here, and that's appointing Dr. Foxall. I just want to say how much I appreciate the teamwork that Dr. Foxall and Jeff Newton have shown in the there, the, the good things that are happening at the jail, and how anxious I am to continue those good things, even though Director Newton has decided to move back closer to family, back east. He will certainly be missed. But I, I think when we have an opportunity to keep at least half of that team in place, I, I think for a smooth transition and for continuity of operations, that this appointment makes sense. We're lucky to have somebody like Dr. Foxall able to step in for us. Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes. And in our discussion, so the public knows, we were talking about the progression and the progress the Correctional Center has made, how there was a tremendous amount of turnover of Directors over a course of a number of years, how some of them lasted such a short period of time, and how expensive the searches were, and the national searches, and the hiring of headhunters, and the need for continuity, the need to immediately have somebody to step in as an interim Director when we don't have two meetings coming up. Yeah, okay. That it was, yeah. And that was the gist of our discussion. It was not subterfuge. It was not to undermine. It was to see things happen in an efficient and progressive manner. And I don't think an average citizen, now, we might feel our noses out of joint. I felt my nose was out of joint a few times over the years. But I don't think the average citizen would view it that way. I think they'd see that we were doing county business, trying to do it efficiently and effectively. And I, that's the end of my discussion. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah. We probably won't have another meeting to do, so I, I mean, over the years, I've, you know, gained a lot of respect for the institutional corrections, and, you know, I think the essence of anything is to leave it in a better condition than it was when you left. And at least publicly, to the Director and the team you had in place while you were here, I want to wish you well, because I know the sentiment. I wish my father or grandparents could get closer, so I wish you well, and thank you for your service.
The question's been called. There is a motion. Oh, yes, there is a motion and a second. And I just, I want to just make one last statement on my vote, and I'm voting no on this resolution, and it, you can say my nose is out of joint, you can call it whatever you want. It has nothing to do with the individual being placed in that position. It's the process we got to be here, and I think it's wrong. Please vote. Those are the last items of the Criminal Justice Committee.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Oh, I'm sorry?
You voted yes.
Oh, could you please change my vote to no?
The Chair voting no, from, changing from yes to no.
Thank you. Next is the Human Resources Committee. First is the Weekly Personnel Report for Civil Service, and that is as presented. And next are legislative issues. If anyone has any legislative issues to discuss? Seeing none? We have no need for executive session.
I know we had some conversations about this, but it's a budget matter, too. I guess there's a, in looking through, bears my understanding that for Corey Steele and the pilot, they're planning to do an extension to work something out. I just saw it on the email, so I think that's a legislative matter. We should note from aggression.
Okay. Good. No executive session. Next, remember that the offices are closed Monday, July 4th, in service of Independence Day. The Board of Commissioners will not meet July 5th, so our next scheduled is July 12th. Is there a motion to adjourn? Please vote.